All right, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town and New Canons Board of Selectmen. It is Tuesday, October 7th at eight thirty, that phone, it's eight thirty-one. We'll figure out our clock one of these days. In front of you, you have today's agenda, and I would like to add, ask for a motion to add the FCAC, FCAC, I'll just do that, cross-country event agenda item, and we'll put it after item seven. If I could get a motion to add that item.
So moved.
It's unanimous, and then if I can get a motion to approve the amended, the agenda as amended.
So moved.
It's unanimous, and then you have the meeting from our regularly held meeting on September 23rd. Do you have any additions or corrections?
None here.
Nope.
If I could get a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
It's unanimous. Public comment, members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on an agenda topic scheduled for review and/or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address, bosdistribution@newcanonct.gov. If anyone wishing to address the board, seeing none, we'll move on to fire equipment, maintenance, and repairs.
Good morning, all. The Fire Department like to request to open a 26PO with MES fire equipment, not to exceed $15,000 for the purchase and maintenance of our firefighting equipment.
So Alby, how much did we spend last year on this?
With MES?
With MES, I guess there's multiple different vendors, so.
Guessing between fifteen and twenty, it was probably closer to 20,000 last year with them. They take care of our extrication tools, so it'll vary. Last year, we had a few purchases with them.
I'm sorry, they take care of which?
Extrication, the vehicle extrication tools, and last year, we had some purchases of hoses and so on. So they were closer to 20,000 with MES last year.
Yeah, and it was in your budget?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No question.
All right, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Fire Department for FY26 blanket purchase order with MES fire equipment in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for the purchase and maintenance of firefighting equipment.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Okay, Nick, we haven't seen you in a while, Nick. Nice to see you. I know you love coming to see us. We're so.
So, thank you, morning.
Good morning.
So we have a couple of pumps to buy, Nick's gonna take you through the, through the purchase of those.
Good morning, the first item on the agenda is a Vaughn chopper pump. Eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. The WPCF solicited four suppliers, three responded with haze pumps, submitting the lowest bid. There are currently six of these pumps in operation at the WPCF, and haze pumps is the representative at all six New England states. Available budget is $30,000. That's number one, do you want me to go on to number two, or?
Is it the same pump that they're giving you the bid on, or is it different?
Same exact pump.
Same exact pump, okay, there we go, all right.
Wow, that's a, that's a big margin difference, so. Have we used this company before?
Yes, it used to be a Walker and Wellington, and now their haze pump, but they are the original suppliers.
Okay. Okay.
Second item on the agenda is a request to purchase two KSP submersible pumps in the amount of $27,512. Again, six suppliers were solicited, and only AFT submitted the bid, their New England representatives. And the KSP supply, the KSP pumps are conveying water and solids to the plant where the Vaughn chopper pumps mass rate the solids, relieving wear and tear on the rest of our equipment, making it easier for process control. That's the difference between the two.
How are we soliciting bids for, how did we solicit bids for this?
Amount to the companies.
Oh, okay, so there are, this is like a piece of equipment that like is very specific and.
Yes, yes. Six of them are on the roads in the collection system, at each pump station, there's two.
Okay.
And then there's three pump stations at the plant where the chopper pumps are.
Any, any feel for why nobody else bid?
They, well, since they represent the company in all six New England states, they pretty much control it.
Oh, so they have monopoly on it, okay, in the area, okay.
For all of New England, AFT is representative, so.
Okay.
They're gonna have to get the supply from him, and then they're obviously gonna put a markup on it, they're not gonna win, so it's usually the way it works.
Pretty specific item.
Yep, yep. All right, any questions? All right, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to purchase the following, Bond Submersible Chopper Pump from Haze Pump, Inc. in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and KSB Submersible Pumps and Casing Seals from the Atlantic Fluid Technology in the amount of $27,512.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Parks Department requests to enter into contracts with Cape and Island Tennis and Track to repaint all lines and numbers on the New Canon High School track. We requested a quote from Cape and Island Tennis and Track as they were the installers of the track surfacing and qualify on a state contract. The report came back stating the track is in great shape, but we are due for relining to enhance track standards and to improve surface quality. The work will be performed this fall, and the operations will shut down the track for about two days. Since track and field is a spring spore, it is the best time of year for these track repairs. The total amount for this service comes to $11,300, and I added a $1,100 contingency, raising the total for this project to $12,400. The money is available and budgeted within the fiscal year 2026 Track Resurfaced Top Coat account.
So this company installed the track initially, is that what you said?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
And they took care of painting the lines.
Okay.
Very specific.
Yeah.
Lines painted in this case, so.
And it lasts five years, that's kind of, it's the, it's five years old, so we expect this to hang in there for five years.
And the capital budget coming out, I think it's three years from now, is putting another top coat on the whole track.
Got it.
So we don't get to the point where we have to strip everything off. It can, it can be resurfaced, and it will give us another probably ten years out of the track where we may be able to get another three or four extra, but then you'd have to strip everything, and it'd be a bigger cost.
It's just like our roads, right?
Very much so, yeah.
Yeah.
You can't use the little liner we have for the roads to do this, I'm kidding.
As one of the things that you put in this quota, I guess the company did, was the complete power washing of the track. Did we, we're gonna skip that this time around, is that the?
We did not budget for the power washing, when they came out, they looked at it. They said it would be nice to do, but it's not required for painting the lines.
Has anybody said anything about, you know, anything on the track, like sometimes we've gotten mold and leaf buildup or whatever, has anybody said that about being a slippery surface or anything?
Not to where it's causing a slippery surface, just by the track makeup itself, it would look better. You know, it would, you know, it's like power washing your house, yeah.
So Jay didn't mention anything about that?
We talked about it, Fields Committee.
Okay, so nobody had any issues with the, okay.
No, and I spoke to the company, and they said it's something that they do pretty often, too, just painting it instead of doing the whole full service.
Okay.
Do we own power washers in the town? No, I'm just saying, you know, we've done power washing.
Or it's just the extent of it, we just don't have the time within our department. Even the company who probably would bring a full crew, they said it would take them about two weeks to.
Oh, wow.
Power wash, so.
It's a huge area, when you, when you start thinking about it.
Yeah, yeah. We tried to power wash our tennis court, my husband did, and he didn't get very far. It looks a little interesting right now. Okay. All right, any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks Department, enter into a contract with Cape and Island Tennis and Track in the amount of $11,300, plus a contingency of $1,100 for a total cost of $12,400. The project entails the relining of the New Canon High School track lines.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous.
That's just a question about timing on that, how quickly are they gonna do that?
I just spoke to the representative of their company this morning, and he said two days. So we'll shut it down for two days, and that includes the drying.
Definitely gonna be over the next.
I was gonna say, we don't have that much time.
Weeks, yes, before it gets cold.
Okay, thank you.
So will you guys be coming back, like, in the future for a power washing on this, if we kind of put it off now? This.
We do not, we do, we do not see that we'll be putting money in, the power washing was.
Twenty-two thousand, yeah.
Okay, just asking.
Until it's time to put a new surface.
All right, so, okay, that's not gonna be an expense, okay, thanks.
Okay, and just, is there any issue with temperature with putting the paint down?
There is, that's why the fall's the best.
No, I know, but it's gonna get cold, so I just wanted to make sure we prioritize getting it in quicker rather than, okay. Because it is the fall, but it's now at the later, we're getting to the later fall.
So it feels like summer.
Yeah, wait till tomorrow. Okay, all right, thank you, how about softball and baseball field upgrades?
Alrighty, so in addition, we are requesting to, the approval to enter into contracts with two vendors, Athletic Field Services and DuraEdge products for our annual softball and baseball field repairs. This year, we reached out to four qualified vendors, and only AFS Athletic Field Services was able to provide us with a proposal. AFS has serviced our fields for many years and managed to keep their prices within the same range of last year's pricing. This, these repairs are essential for safety and promote better playing conditions for our athletes. We would like to award the field work to Athletic Field Services for a total of $39,847, and I have added a $4,000 contingency, raising the total to $43,847. In addition, we selected DuraEdge products to provide us with their infield mix. We have used DuraEdge for years, and it has proven its success on our ball fields. The total cost of materials and shipping came to a total of $15,985, and I added a $1,600 contingency, raising the total request to $17,585. The total amount for this project comes to $55,832, with a contingency total of $5,600. The total including contingencies comes to $61,432, and this total is within our budget in the account titled Field Upgrades.
Sir Ryan, can I ask you, with the fields, so I'm assuming you said it's comparable to last year, pressing? But do you have one less field to take care of since we put in the brand-new baseball?
We have two less fields now, so we have a total of six clay fields now. And with that being said, we still have to do these field repairs. Basically, the way we bid it out is on a per-field basis, so each company can sort of win on each field.
So the prices are in line with the reduced number of fields?
Correct, each line item depending on each.
We have two less fields, the pricing here reflects two less fields, so you feel the price.
We reduced our budget request for this line item, knowing that. And last year, we did not do any work on the two fields that we lost either, last fall.
Okay.
So, and, and this year, Ryan's added in some work on Melick and Gamble, the, between the turf and the natural grass, just to strip some sod and re-level that, so that's not a safety concern there, too.
Okay.
I was actually at the, I would need for the Shakespeare thing this weekend, and I was really admiring the way those fields look. It's, it's remarkable, the difference between when I was coaching there a little while ago, and what they look like now. I mean, it's, these kids have got to love playing on those fields, it's just amazing the way they look. And as far as this particular item goes, I love the detail that you guys went into here. I mean, it's fourteen pages long, but breaking out each field, what we're gonna do to each field, so that takes some time, so thank you for breaking all that out. It's really a detailed summary here, so it's great to see that, instead of having it in one lump sum.
Right.
Thank you for the work, appreciate it. I mean, it goes down to just literally every little item is covered here, so easy to, easy to get through. A lot of work, though, to take care of those fields.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? And just again, did I hear you say we only got Athletic Field Services to bid, so it's, it's a bit of a, like, you know, again. So why didn't, is DuraEdge able to bid on that as well?
DuraEdge provides the infield mix for the clay.
Okay.
And then I reached out to four companies, including AFS via email.
Right.
And two told me that they were too busy this time of year, and then one never responded, so. And these are companies that we've had people reach out to us and say that they've done great work for their towns and other ball fields, so that's why we request from them.
Okay, and is this, like, basically with the time of year, you have to do it, like, everybody has to do it at the same time of year?
It's best, because when spring comes around, people are on those fields come March, so.
Okay. All right. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Recreation Department to enter into contracts with the following vendors in order to provide annual upgrades to softball and baseball fields. Athletic Field Services, $39,847, with a $4,000 contingency, bringing the total to $43,847. And DuraEdge Products, Inc., $15,985, with a $1,600 contingency, bringing the total to $17,585.
So moved.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
And then our additional item of the FCAC Cross Country Event.
Here on behalf of Jay Egan and the Fairfield County Interscholastic Athletic Conference, FCAC, to request permission for them to sell commemorative t-shirts and have the Kona Ice Truck at next week's cross-country, Boys and Girls Cross Country Champ, and not championship, race at Wavine Park. Kona Ice will operate the truck and will donate 20% of their profits back to the FCAC, so that will help with, with all their programs. The commemorative t-shirts will also be sold by, through the FCAC. This, this race marks the end of the regular season for both Boys and Girls Cross Country, and we're expecting more than 900 students crossing the finish line this year. This will be the 32nd year we've had it at Wavine, which in my opinion is by far the best cross-country race, I'd say even New England, but. So with the help of CERT, New Canon EMS, the Police Department, Parks and Rec team, the event is something we look forward to, it's well, we just need a day like today, or maybe 10 degrees cooler. But there'll be 14 schools participating, and it's always the highlight, so.
It was so fun, I was walking last week through Wavine and Jeff Brenson, who's the girls' cross-country coach, and I don't know the boys' cross-country coach, but it was so fun to see the kids all getting ready and having the sort of home, home-field advantage. It is someone who watched those races many years, it's a, it's a great event, so. And, and I always thought, why aren't we, you know, selling t-shirts and things like that to help, you know, one at, because every other community allows that in their, in these big races. I mean, I went to a million indoor and outdoor track meets, and every, there's always stuff for sale, and it helps the, it helps the programs, quite frankly, to free costs.
But this, I think, goes to FCAC, I think the.
It does, but FCAC, you know, provides things to the.
Yeah, it comes back one way or the other, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Kids love those commemorative shirts, too. You'll see those all over the place.
How, how many drawers?
Yeah, I don't know what to do with them now, but I.
They were tie-dye for.
Yeah. All right, so any other questions? If I could get a motion to approve a request from the New Canon High School Athletic Department and the Parks and Recreation Department to allow for selling merchandise, and one food vendor to participate in the FCAC Cross Country Event on October 15th, 2025, in Wavine Park. A portion of the proceeds will be donated to FCAC. It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Tiger.
Morning again. So I'm sitting in for Bill this morning for this next item. This is some additional work needed for our building alarm systems or fire alarms during, so all the systems were installed earlier. During our annual inspection, the Fire Marshal found some equipment that needed replacement or repairs. So we went to Silent Watchman, who is our vendor present, they gave you a detailed list of the items that they could quantify out. And then there are some that are basically on a time and material basis, eliminating an extension cord, things of that nature. And then reprogramming certain security areas, panic buttons, what have you, they estimated that out as well. So the quoted repair cost is $14,189, the time of materials, we, we estimate it out at $5,811 for a total of $20,000, and the monies are available in our 26 budget.
Any questions?
All right, this is minutia, but I just jumped this up, that the battery replacements, I, I'm assuming these are not your regular Duracell batteries at $875 for town hall? They're like big old batteries. And most of this equipment's been in for a while, right, and?
That's correct.
Just general maintenance?
General maintenance, yeah. Yeah, actually, we go through an annual inspection every year, every year, they're, they're bound to find something.
Something.
Right, you know, so it's better to find it now, so that we have everything in working order.
Yeah, I talked to Bill, the only surprise that I had was that the theater, one of the beams in the theater already went bad, and that's like, you see that on one of the first items, but, you know, that stuff. Today, technology and, and some of the stuff.
It's also part of the reason we're switching vendors.
Why we did, so we switched over now, so now hopefully going forward, we shouldn't have some issues with, with the new, with the new vendor, with Silent Watchman.
Yeah, they weren't thrilled with the prior vendor.
I also asked about redundancy, and he said that not only is he on the alerts, but we've got others that are on as well.
The building managers, so each, so I'm on the alert, and then the building manager themselves, so say Ryan or John for the Parks Garage and other areas, the building manager is also on. So there's, there's redundancy there, so it's not just going to one individual, it's going to multiple.
Yeah, because when something happens, you want everybody to know about it.
Absolutely.
All right.
Any other questions?
Yep.
All right, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works for a change order with Silent Watchman in the amount of $20,000. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, sale of composted leaf mulch. Good morning.
This is our, this is our annual sale to clean out the, the leaf mulch site in preparation for the next bout of leaves that are bound to fall, or actually starting to fall. So we publicly advertised this, we went out, and then we solicited with three vendors that we know for this, for the sale. And two of the vendors came back, the third vendor apologized, he just didn't have the trucking capability this year to do it, but he's still interested in next year. So we'll let him know again, just this year, his trucking capabilities fell through. So this was for the sale of, of 2,000 cubic yards of leaf mulch. Peter Lonnie Incorporated came in at the high bid, in this case for $12 a yard, for a total of $24,000. And we'd like to, to sell to Peter for that amount. And just to give you a history, my numbers only go back to 2009, but from 2009 forward to 2025, this, this will top $250,000 in sales this year, so we, our total will be $250,600 coming back.
For how many years?
Since 2009, and a couple of years there, we had very limited, 2012, 13, and 14, we had, we had limited amounts being sold at that time. But, uh, yeah, we, we've, the pricing was at $8 for a number of years, then nine, and now we've been up in the 12 range for the past three years.
Okay.
That's a great way to keep it, keep it moving.
Right, we've got it, yeah, we have to, we have to clean it up, because the leaves are gonna fall. We are putting a notice out in the papers, and then it's in the newsletter going out. And just so everyone is aware, we're gonna start on November 3rd with our leaf collection, and then run through the, the last weekend in November, which was Thanksgiving weekend, we give everyone that one, and then we start to clean up roads. And once we finish that, we, we put the road to bed, meaning that at that point in time, we go through, we say, okay, we're complete with that area. So that entire month of November will be leaf collection for the one acre zones and less.
How do we advertise the availability of the most of the public? Because you can run, you can run in there and pick up a, a little, a little bit or a lot if you want for your homies.
It's mostly word of mouth, but it's, it's a really good coconut telegraph, forever. But the Planet New Canon does a very nice job as well, and then it's also listed on the transfer station as, if you have a pass, you can come in and get it, since it's now available right at the transfer station and not down at the leaf mulch site.
Okay, so they, you don't go to the leaf mulch site, they used to dump it over the wall, and you just drive by and pick it up.
At the, two administrations ago, we stopped that, because people were coming, contractors were coming up with an excavator, and actually excavating all of it that we put out and putting it on their truck, and no one was getting any. So we said we had to, we, we had to stop that, that trend.
Ad, advertise it in one of your DPW, you know, once it's ready to be used. Yeah, we could put it in your DPW alerts, I can add it.
So the, so if some, a resident wants to, they go to the transfer station, they could even, when they're dumping, you know, go to the dump, they can pick it up.
Yes, yeah.
Where exactly, when you drive in, where is it?
Right next to swap shop.
Right, right next to swap shop, where the salt bin is.
Okay.
So we, we take, we take that out, pretty much in another month, we'll take that out, because people will be done with their beds, and then we'll be getting ready for salt, right? And then, once the season is over, the winter season is over, we put the bins back out again. So right there, it's pretty, very prominent, you come in, you can almost see it as you drive straight in.
Does that go in there and take it, do you, or?
No, we don't allow contractors to come in, it's just the resident, sometimes a resident will come in with their contracted, but we limit their amount.
Okay.
All right, so are there any further questions?
No.
If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to sell composted leaf mulch to Peter Lonnie Inc. in the amount of $12 per cubic yard for a total sale price of $24,000.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Okay. Oh, you know what, before we go to that, though, the leaf mulch, so what do you think in this year, is it gonna be better or worse than last year? With the dry conditions?
We need some rain.
It's not totally.
Rain, yeah, we're getting rain tonight, I think, late tonight.
A little too late for that, so. It's, it's not quite, it's still a little hot than it usually is this time of year, but.
Okay.
By the time it, it'll, it'll rest for five months, six months, so.
Yeah, well, no, I'm more worried about the guys, not, not the file. Sorry, I wasn't clear, I'm more worried about, no, I mean, but do, because last year was brutal. Yeah, you thinking we're gonna?
I'm hoping, you know, it's out of my hands.
Okay, all right. Tell, tell everybody we're thinking about them and praying for, praying for an easier, easier season. Okay.
So I handed you two sheets of a paper, I apologize, they weren't on the tab, what's? So one is the, one is listed, the Town Council Infrastructure and Utilities Subcommittee Project Status Report. This is one that I've been going through with the Town Council Infrastructure Committee for the year or so, and it highlights the larger projects that they've been interested in. The top list was last year's projects, the bottom list, starting with the paved 25 local roads down to the town hall annex roof, lists out the larger projects from this year, and it gives you the project name, the contractor, the bid amount, the contingency, and the project total, and then what was approved by the Board of Selectmen, by this body, and then the final cost. If we've got a final cost at that point, then the difference between the bid amount and the final cost, and then if there is a change there, the percentage of the contingency used, not, to give you an idea of how much, you know, whether we've used any contingency or a portion thereof, and that kind of tells you, details out all of the larger projects that we've had over the past year for them. And then the second sheet is, will be a work in progress, since it'll be updated every Board of Selectmen meeting, and this is basically the approved projects with any project that had contingency. And this will be the fiscal year 26 tabulation, very similar information, only this actually gives you the date that the Board of Selectmen approved it, the location of the project, and then it also tells you whether the PO number, any comments associated with it, and then the project manager itself, so that you can detail out who, who was actually running that project. And this will continue to grow throughout the year, and then we'll update it as we go, finalizing contracts, finalizing costs, things of that nature. But as of right now, we've only had two projects on this list that, that closed out, and that was the Elm Street paving project and the Lapham Community Center work of the sidewalks, the rest of them, we're still working on finalization. So if you have, unless, you know, I gave you this, so if there's other information you want to see, I'll put it on the spreadsheet and go forward. If there's something else you're looking for, but this kind of, in past practice, kind of answered all the questions from the previous boards as to what they were looking for.
I might want to just, just from a visual, like, either put the, the projects that aren't done, because it looks like there's $3 million of, like, difference, and some of those projects aren't done, like.
Yes, yeah, I could zero that, I could zero that line out.
You might want to, just, just because it's like, oh, we got.
A little confusing, yeah, it gets a little confusing, it's tough, it's difficult, because it's.
Yeah, no, I know. Go get, go get Ryan to do an if-then, get, get Ryan to do an if-then statement for you on your, on your Excel spreadsheet, and then. Go get, go get Ryan to do an if then, no, get, get Ryan to do an if then statement for you on your, on your Excel spreadsheet and then it'll, it'll automatically put a zero in there. Just, he knows what it is, just have him do that for you.
What an F M statement is.
Just have him do that for you. He is the resident expert sheet expert.
He is, yeah. No, it's, but yes, if there's something else that you'd like to see, just let me know and I'll add it to the uh, add it to the list. But as of right now, if you go back to the, the Town Council one, um, the majority of our projects have run on, on budget or under budget. Um, very few have had a uh, a, a little bit of contingency used, um, those are actually in red.
So in, in the Town Council summary, um, which all those projects are. Have they done except for a couple of months?
There's a couple that are not, that's correct.
Yeah, so it looks like for three hundred and nineteen thousand to the good, but that's, we still have these other projects, so we don't quite know.
Right, right. So yeah, they'll, they'll, you know, to Deanna's point, we'll, we'll clear up that so that if they're not completed, they, there's not a difference between bid amount and final cost cuz that'll be, that's a little confusing. You know, makes it difficult at that point. It gives you, it, what I was trying to do was show you that, okay, this is how much I've got left, you know, it's trying to do the math for you, but again, it's still a little confusing on the, on the. But yeah, so that uh, but for the most part, the uh, they've all been running quite well, like I said, on or under budget, um, we're all within contingency. Um, since uh, for this year and, and in the past year or so. Um, and then uh, the uh, as far as the overall update goes, we broke ground behind uh, us in the playhouse lot, so they've got probably another hour or so of digging and then they're gonna start their formwork for the enclosure. And then they're gonna jump over and go simultaneously with the enclosure and the uh, uh, the staircase ramp. So right now, they'll be uh, they're, they'll finish the layout on the enclosure, then start the layout on the, the ramp and then start that work there. We have Frontier up there this morning, thank you very much, to finish the uh, carryover, we had some difficulty getting um, Optimum and Frontier to come out, so Deanna had to make a phone call for us. And miraculously, we had a person within an hour after a week's worth of angst on our part, is one phone call and someone was there within an hour, yeah, go figure. Um, but yeah, so that, that work will go on and we told them the imperativeness of getting uh, getting done by uh, by shopping season, by uh, by the end of Thanksgiving.
Tiger, and everybody knows, we want this done before Thanksgiving.
Contractor's aware, he's aware of the tightness of the schedule, so he'll, he'll uh, go and work. And then we broke ground at the Waviney um, Western Parking Lot yesterday, so they, they started removing the asphalt and uh, finishing the layout of that lot itself, he'll be putting in some granite curb today, tomorrow. Then start the sidewalk work and then they'll start building the lot off of that, and the same thing there, we're gonna try to push him as well. You know, because uh, as they, as quickly as they complete that project, then they jump over to Pine Street. And uh, start Pine Street work, and the goal is to finish Pine Street this year as well, in this season. Those are kind of the big ones we have, we have Brushy in one twenty-three that it, this, the uh, crossing improvements, the intersection improvements going on there, they finished on the Locust Avenue side. With the, with the sidewalk extension and the crossing for the pedestrian ramp, and now they're working on the Brushy Ridge side. Finish that side, finish the connectivity and then do the signal work, so they've got another couple, three weeks worth of work out there. And um, the only other thing we have is that on Friday, we'll be unveiling the new stop sign at Curry's in White Oak Shade. Right now, it's still covered, but on Friday it'll come out, um, the covering will come off, it's been about three weeks since we planted or told people it's happening. And uh, the feedback I've gotten from the residents in the area has just been positive about the fact that we're actually installing the site, uh, installing a stop sign there. I think that that's pretty much the point.
A roof at the annex, is that, how much longer before that's?
Three weeks left, he changed over, thank you, he uh, he's done on our, on this facing side. Now he's on the opposite facing side and he's got about three weeks worth of work over there to do, started over there a couple of days ago and um, he'll work through that, same exact, if, if the weather holds.
I mean, one whole side's done.
One whole side's done, yeah.
Took like a week.
I, it's about two weeks, yeah, a little bit over two weeks, yeah, yeah, but you would, yeah, but they, they worked quite fast, we, we, we estimated three to four weeks, I'd rather, you know, over, you know, under promise and over deliver, so we said three to four weeks, they were definitely in the two week, three week range, they had a couple of days of rain where they had a problem. Um, and then obviously we'll get some rain tomorrow, and then uh, the only other thing we have is Friday is Walk to School Day. So postponed from tomorrow cuz it's gonna rain, uh, but it'll be uh, for Saks and South, it'll be on Friday. So Highway Parks, Police Department, insert, will be out manning all the intersections uh, in the area. There's probably twenty plus intersections that we man, and it's always a good day. So if you can come out during that time, it's usually a good day to come and watch the kids, they're really excited, yeah, really excited for the day. Best thing to do is go down to South School, right after the kids come in, cuz they have a line dancing and they have a whole bunch of stuff in the back, it's a great day for them.
This uh, the construction over here with uh, both of those jobs going at the same time, that's a busy spot now, so that's, you know.
Little tight, so yeah, we're hoping that the, the uh, uh, to Deanna's point, the roofer will get out fast, you know, um, get in and get out. But uh, that, yeah, right now.
The free parking, that's, that's actually paid parking there, so just go to the free parking in the Park Street Lot.
I guess we're ripping a bandaid off quick here, so that's good. And then get out, and they have gas to do there too, don't they, where the uh?
We have a, we have a gas extension to go down the staircase to get to Le Pen, Cité d'En, and then uh, Elm Restaurant and others that are down there. And um, the, the good thing is that Burns is the contractor for both, so the Burns Gas Division is waiting for Burns. Uh, Site Division to open up the area and then they'll put the uh, they'll at least sleeve it to get down to the staircase, it passes staircase, and then at that point in time, it becomes the uh, the property owner's responsibility, but we'll get it through our stairs.
That's gonna feed the backs of those restaurants, where those tanks have been over the years, we'll get rid of the tanks.
That's the hope, that's correct, is to, is to do exactly that, that, that tank firm that's right behind Le Pen, Cité d'En, and then the, then behind Elm and all the others. Exactly same situation, that's, that's the hope to do that.
Great. Thank you, Tiger.
Um, so Tiger, on the, the uh, current sheet for projects for this year, and you do have a line item for it, for uh, project completion, so and if you just, when you do that, you can get the dates and cuz you have two completed projects, that would be great, cuz then we can see how quickly you guys move through this stuff, which would be terrific. And I tell you that the uh, choice of the uh, color for the roof looks great over there.
I was stressing over that.
No, but it, I, 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 it's like, wow, this works. It's like you wouldn't even.
That is not my sphere of competency, so the, the, the pressure of changing the color.
Thank you, this is very helpful.
I did consult some local designers.
These, these spreadsheets are very helpful, Tiger, and it does um, it eliminates those comments we've had in the past decade or so over the years of just somebody saying, you know, whether they're elected or not, oh my gosh, we're always overrunning this or overrunning that. When here it is in writing, so.
That's, that's the reason why, that was the impetus behind starting to track it, cuz the, the comments were starting to bother me, so I wanted to put it down, I, I wanted to know myself purely. And then once I put it all down, I said, okay, now you can see, so.
But, but then on top of it, and from a budgeting perspective, you know, we know that for a while, we had like a bazillion projects, you couldn't get them done, so that, and then we'll see year in, year out of the projects we had. We, we could get these done, you know, and, and then if we have excess contingency, then we can deal with it then, as opposed to, you know, having pockets hanging out, this is really helpful. It's great.
All right, um. You know what, and before you go, Tiger, if just, if you could, no, come, sit down, it's fine, but um, just if you could just convey to the Highway Department, they've been really um, you know, all the DPW workers and have been really busy with this whole transition of, you know, the parking plan and stuff, I mean, they were instrumental in helping getting new signs out and ordering new signs and just it, everybody has really kinda come together and, you know, worked really hard to make sure that we have as few hiccups as possible in, in the rollout, so if you can just convey to everybody our, my appreciation and our appreciation, thank you. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First item is Amwins, and we have a contract that will become effective one one twenty-six through twelve thirty-one twenty-six. Amwins is our Medicare Supplement Plan for our retirees, we currently have sixty-three people on it, nine are families. The total P O is two hundred and fifty-four thousand, the coverage is for medical, prescription and vision. And so this is a contract that we need for the year.
Okay, so this says two fifty-three oh five oh.
That's it, okay, that's, yes, that's it.
I just wanna make sure.
I just rounded it up.
Yep, no, that's fine, I just wasn't sure if I needed to round it up.
Yeah, no. So is any of this cost picked up by our funding of O P E D? Annual.
While we grow the O P E D, um, if there's a point where the ADAC is going to be more than what the claims we pay out, then we can put some against it. But we haven't put any against it yet, we haven't needed.
This is why we are growing the O P E D account, because, you know, people aren't working anymore, we have this obligation to them, so we're trying to fund that, you know.
Grow right now without pulling it down.
It's probably eighty percent. But, but at some point, that, it, that will be a cost that gets covered, exactly.
We'll start pulling it down, but uh, it's, it's growing pretty significantly now to be able to support it.
We, we are, we are so far ahead of most other towns in the funding of this obligation, I don't think people have any idea. Most, most people don't have any of it funded and the entire cost is on a current basis, now we're picking up on a current basis, but we're structuring it, so we won't have to, so I think people need to know that. Yep.
It's great. This is budgeted item, we've looked at this.
Yes, this gets budgeted every year.
Okay. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Human Resources Director to approve a purchase order and annual contract renewal with Amwins Group Benefits in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, fifty dollars for the period of January first, twenty twenty-six to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you. All right.
Okay, next one is security cameras, we currently have security cameras in municipal buildings to protect employees, residents, visitors and property. We need a policy as to who can view them, when and for what purposes, legal has reviewed the policy and we also have a form that a person has to fill out, a staff member, if they're looking to view the cameras, so we're just trying to be able to understand why people need to view them and if they have to, what the reason is, and so. This is anybody who wants to in the town, or anybody anywhere who wants to get. Correct, police have used it, our town managers have used it, um, they use it a lot if the dumpsters are a mess or if there's garbage. Um, Parks has asked, so we just figured we better try to um, make sure we know why people are looking at them and for what reason. And on the other, there's an other purpose request, who gets to say if the other is meets whatever test, I mean, I, you know, cuz the purpose of the request is official town business, law enforcement, legal proceedings or other. So who gets to sign up on the other? It would be H R, the first selectman, that would be if we were subpoenaed for court or because many times we are told to hold these videos for court process, so um, we would just make sure that it would either go through the first selectman or H R. Okay. How long do we keep the video? Ninety days, and if we needed to, they can hold it for longer. Great, okay.
And Cheryl, you said legals look through this?
They have, we've, we've had them, we haven't had a policy and it was just, it seemed to be time that we needed to kinda understand what we were using it for and who is viewing it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
If not, if I could have a motion to approve a municipal security camera policy uh, applicable to all town of New Canaan departments and facilities where cameras are installed.
Second.
Unanimous, okay, and uh, town clerk update, I know we invited um, Claudia to join us today, um, but she decided not to, so um, Cheryl, if you could uh, give us an update on where we stand with the uh?
So we put uh, advertisement out about four weeks ago, five weeks ago, we have close to a hundred and eighty applicants. Um, Claudia is reviewing them, I have reviewed them, we are hoping next week to start to set up some interviews. Um, what I told Claudia is that we try to pick ten to fifteen percent at least um, of those individuals to be interviewed. We do have two positions open, so I am hoping to start to schedule those, um. She is busy and has not been able to get through all of her, all of the resumes, um, so hopefully she will finish that by the end of the week.
Yeah, that's a lot of resumes, you said a hundred and eighty applicants.
Here they are. What's her two positions too, so. Right, um, so what's going on with staffing now if we're down two positions, I mean, I know we approved temporary. She's still got the temporary help down there. And that's just for like three months, right, we just approved her for. Do, well, I guess she's not here, but just I wanna make sure things are moving smoothly, cuz this does really, it, it is an office that has a lot of interface with residents and what they need. Correct. So we are doing what we can to try to get these positions filled. So we, I think we gave the first quarter, right, I like, so um, I just think we need to get that done because it takes a while to onboard people, right? I mean, so you might find a great candidate, they might have to give four weeks' notice or something like that, and we could be understaffed, even though there's a lot of interest.
Well, there's a lot of staff, the part-time staff, as I understand it, is not really capable of doing some of the work of the town clerk that needs to be done, I mean, there's, she needs to hire that staff because for like deeds and things like that, I mean, there's a specific skill, so I mean, they can answer the phone, they can, you know, greet people, I don't know what else they do, but we need to hire people because there's specific jobs that need to, to happen or um, you know, it gets get further and further behind it.
Well, let's get going, we got like a hundred and eighty people are excited to work here, let's go. I do need the town clerk to uh, give me their choices, so that's what we're waiting on.
Okay.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on um, to appointments, um, I believe Greg Crowley is on. Okay, um, so um, I don't know if you wanna put him on.
Invited him to unmute.
Okay, all right, hey Greg.
Hi, good morning, everybody.
Morning. So um, we have an opening on the Utilities Commission um, by uh, you know, someone's term expiring and um, Greg, I have attended a few events locally with um, you know, uh, the, all the electricity and pure uh, hearings at the library and I've always seen Greg there, I've known Greg for quite a long time, um, and he's super smart and uh, has helped uh, Woodway with their, with some of their energy um, issues, so I thought he would be a great, great addition. I don't know if any of you have any.
Greg and I had a great conversation yesterday, so you know, the energy and it's just the idea of thinking like outside of the box, you know, utilities in a bigger perspective, I think he'd be a terrific addition, so, and thanks for the chat yesterday, and I know.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Hey Greg, so you can, so you can speak a little bit, tell us uh, how long you've been in town, family status, all that good stuff.
And um, I think we've been here, well, we've been in town probably for fifteen years, maybe fourteen years, uh, before that, we lived in Stanford and we kinda sorta lived over here, I guess, uh, we did most of our things here, we were in North Stanford, so feel like we've been here a long time. Uh, we've had, you know, three kids, all of which had joy from New Canaan High School. Um, one of them is coming home to marry her Canaan High School sweetheart this Saturday, so she arrives tomorrow, so we're having a wed for her and so um, my wife Leslie, some of you may know, and so typically I've known as her husband. Um, but yeah, we married quite a while, I've, you know, I've worked in the commodity space, still the energy space, over here, and still, I'm pretty active in that area, so um, you know, I know the, the commission has been highly focused on uh, cellular work. I would not say that's my core expertise, but I'm happy to help in any way and, and in particular around the energy stuff and uh, maybe some of the some of the, you know, sometimes there's noise around energy with respect to emissions and all that, and that's maybe an area I could help with, so.
So I, just so everyone knows, I, I've actually reached out to Greg personally for the town uh, for advice. Um, because we need to renew our um, energy contract, uh, purch- you know, purchasing contract and again, not a sphere of competency for me, um, but um, I always say I'm not the smartest person in the room, but I know who they are, so I will, I will reach out to those people and Greg is one of those people I've reached out for advice and counsel, cuz I just, I need help.
I know everything.
Yep, don't, don't, so I appreciate all the help you've already given me and the town, so.
Well, it's a lot of talent here, and I've known Greg for a long, long time and uh, I can't think of a better person to, to join, so be careful, Greg, we're gonna, you know, you'll start small, you could end up getting bigger, so uh.
You know, it's a great town and uh, we, it's a pretty sticky place, I'm not sure how we ended up here, but we uh, we love it here, so, you know, if you get asked to help out, I'm happy to try and help, help out as best I can, so.
I appreciate the yes, and when, when I ask, so. All right, so if I could get a motion to approve the appointment of Greg Crowley to the Utilities Commission for a three-year term ending July first, twenty twenty-six.
So move.
Second, it's unanimous, thank you.
Nice, great.
And uh, best wishes for an awesome wedding. Okay, all right. Um, moving on, uh, we have um a vacancy on the Inland Wetlands Commission. Um, it uh oh my gosh, I'm having a mind blank on who, who is rolling off. Priscilla Wolke is, uh, her term has expired and so and she has said that she would like to resign. So um Don Mastrinardi is currently an alternate on uh the Inland Wetlands Commission and um Priscilla was a Republican. Uh, Don is the Republican alternate. So I am asking to move Don up to a permanent member. I did have a conversation with Don last week when uh I was making this, uh, because he's, he has been unable to attend regularly as a, as an alternate member and um you know, he said that he was having some staffing issues at his businesses, but that that um, that issue has been resolved and I explained to him that, you know, uh attendance is mandatory, you know, that if you miss too many meetings, that this board can, you know, take you up to to um, you know, say that we would like you to step down. He's very aware of that and I made, you know, and he committed that he will be an active member. So so that I'm going to uh recommend moving him up from an alternate to a uh full uh permanent member. Any other comments?
Yeah, uh, my position on this one is um it's people in this town are very generous with the time and we appreciate it. But when people raise their hand for to be on a board, even as an alternate, it is expectation that you participate. And it's really important. I think we have the alternates for many reasons. Obviously not everyone can make a meeting, but that is an excellent way for you to get on board and understand what the process of all these committees are. And what bothers me on this one, and I know life gets busy and people don't know what happens, but there has been almost no participation as an alternate by Don to date. I mean, there was a a meeting attendance, I think it was February, and there was nothing until September, you know, um at all. And the September meeting was a super quick one. So my, and I, and I get it, the people get busy and you don't know, but I would feel more comfortable and I know you've had the discussion. Why don't we just wait three months, stay in the alternate and then if uh Don has a capacity timewise to commit to this, at that point, move up to permanent. I just think it's, it's sending the wrong message because we do, I mean, I was in the Board of Finance as an alternate for a good year or so and it's really helpful because you learn a lot, right? But I think it's the wrong message if we're saying, you know, we we take the role of the alternates seriously and that. So I think you have to be honest. And I understand you had the conversation, but I would not feel comfortable right now knowing past track record that you'll definitely get the the attendance you need. So I would just say, let's, let's just say alternate three months and if you make it three months, let's move up.
I actually think it's easier if if he isn't participating, there's a mechanism to get him off the board.
But we never use that mechanism.
I'm not done. Thanks. I just said that I had the conversation with him and was very explicit about the mechanism. So if the mechanism, if if there isn't attendance, then there's a mechanism to move him off the board and have someone else put on the board. If he's just an alternate, then there's no mechanism. So I feel like the the permanent mem- moving him to the permanent membership like has him move and we can, if he's not participating and he doesn't participate, there's a mechanism to say, and I was very clear that there is a mechanism. So.
Well, yeah, I mean, we set the, we set the process of this is the way it works. And if we start to alter that process, we're not following what, you know, what we set out to do. So I, you know.
I I I'm sorry, I missed that.
Well, so we.
The process is you come as an alternate and you be involved and then you move up.
Yeah, but and what you're asking it to do is change the way, like give him another trial or something. So that sets the precedent for other boards and commissions. I don't, you know, I don't think that's really a good solution because then someone's going to say, well, now we should do it here, 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 here. And you know, it's a slippery slope. That's what, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but but I don't think it's necessarily a good solution to have someone on, this is independent and individual who who just, for whatever reason, is not, you know, signed up to be part of it and then just doesn't attend. And then just because, you know, we have this weird thought that physicians are Republican or Democrat, fill it. I mean, just, you know, uh, this stuff's not political, right? This is just like, you know, how to help people figure out their inland wet needs and do stuff properly, right? But you need to be there to understand, you know, the issues facing, you know, these are taxpayers and stuff. So I just, I I think it sends a bad message that, you know, you can sign up to be an alternate, not be there, and then something's opened up and you happen to be in the right political party, get moved up. You you sign up for a board because you want to be involved in what that board does. So my my just thought is you don't have to fill an alternate right away. You can just wait. And then you can say, oh, great, it does work and and move it up to permanent after that. That that would be my position, but I would have trouble supporting this at this point. So.
All right. Um, so if I could get a motion to approve the appointment to move Don Mastrinardi from an alternate member to a regular member for a two-year term ending December first, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
I'll second it. Um, I'll uh in favor.
Hi.
I. Opposed, opposed. Okay, so motion passes. And, you know, just, I I know you're not happy with the the result, but I.
I knew it was going to go that way, but I I think it's a major for people that we expected to be there.
I and I and I have made that, I have made that point very clear. Um, and so.
Yeah, I mean, the met, the message was definitely set then.
Yep.
You know, I do, as a business owner, I understand, like, if you go through some stuff and you've got staff issues and you have to be there. And if that's solved, hopefully now he can, he can come back and be part of this. But, you know.
Yeah, well, time will tell. Time will tell. And, you know, I I was not unclear. So. All right. Um, you have contracts uh under ten thousand. Uh, any questions? All right. Okay. And then um the tree warden.
Morning. So this is uh the latest bid from the uh from the tree warden. Uh, again, we went out to um contractors that are on our emergency list. Uh, we're keeping track to make sure that everyone bids at least four times throughout the year. This is a list that's got twenty-two separate items on it. And we had two bids come in. Olmstead was the low at thirty-six thousand seven oh four. Um, they've done very nice work for us in the past. Bob's reviewed each one of the pricing and uh is comfortable with uh with the recommendation to bring it forward to uh to the board for approval and the monies are available in our uh in our budget for fiscal twenty-six.
Tiger, whenever we do this, I I know you have the list of trees here, which is great to have. Any of these uh super visible where there's neighbor concerns or anything or they?
Any tree that's in front of a property, you've spoken to the neighbors about, yeah, we don't uh, but there's nothing um.
There's twenty-two trees.
There's twenty-two trees. The only one that, yeah, the Elm Place Triangle is the only one that I felt was, you know, because that's uh right in the middle between Elm Place and Woodland. It's that kind of, but that that tree, uh, it's a dead elm tree and we had complaints about it since the kids play in that area. But uh no, nothing, nothing strikes of note as I look through the list.
Questions? If I could get a motion to approve or request from the tree warden to enter into a contract with Olmstead Tree and Truck Care in the amount of thirty-six thousand seven hundred four dollars. The project entails a removal, pruning and stump removal of various trees in town.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um Selectman's comments. Um, I don't really have anything. I guess I would be remiss in not noting that today is the two-year anniversary of the um October seventh, next in Israel. I don't, trying to think, anything else?
About parking?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, parking, I guess, you know, it it is, you know, we have officially transitioned from free parking on um Elm Street to paid and then the Park Street Lot. Uh, you'll note that the machine right now probably has a black garbage bag over it because we can't, we need to have it official. It's gone now? Oh, thank you. All right. So thank you, Tiger and DPW for getting rid of that. Um, so um, you know, that's uh, you know, we're, we're going to be working with people. I mean, Stacy's group has uh is going to be giving out warning tickets. Uh, you're going to get one warning ticket. You're not going to get two. But uh, you know, so we're just going to work through it.
You won't get a warning ticket if you follow the rules. Okay, that's it.
Um, so, you know, we're, we're gonna be, you know, watching and making sure that everything's, you know, going as as we hope and, you know, trying to be flexible if if we notice, notice issues. But uh you know, I, I mean, the the ramp and the, and I mean, I'm thrilled that we're moving the compactor and the garbage away from the walkway. It's disgusting and smells and it'll be nice to have that in a, in a tucked away area. Um, I I literally the other day saw a woman with a walker trying to walk through that garbage area and it made me nervous. So um you know, we're just slowly trying to make improvements to to, you know, improve the experience downtown. Um.
Yeah, a little, so a little empirical data. So we, I had my nineteen eighty high school reunion this weekend.
Oh.
Forty-five years. So uh, it was Chef Louis Friday night and then they did the Historical Society, it toured the dome and then we had our reunion on Saturday night. But uh, Friday night, there were so many people that came up to me and said, you know, we haven't been in town in five years. Cannot believe how much the town has changed in that time and how great everything looks. Now, Friday night happened to be seventy-five degrees and you know, it was just a beautiful night. There were people all over the place, but the feedback and seeing town through someone's eyes who grew up here but haven't been back in some time was really eye-opening and it was really fun to listen to, you know, what they observed and what they saw, which is, you know, sidewalks and all the beautiful things that have happened. So but that, I I just wanted to comment that a year ago, we decided to push the restaurants out another month because as you remember, they, it ended at the end of September and we said, let's, let's get it through October. And it was a perfect example of how well that works. I think the next couple of weeks, if we're lucky, we'll have some good weather and uh it's really, it's really great to see everybody out there. So uh downtown looked great. So.
All right. Anything else? All right. If I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, second.
It's unanimous.